Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, February 26, 2015. Vice Mayor Doug Young has our prayer and our pledge.
Would you please join me in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Moving to second reading, consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 15OZ02,
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
rezoning an area along North Tennessee Boulevard to residential multifamily, RM12.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
all.
Aye.
You've got an hour, Mayor.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
You've got six items.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
So you want to have a quick look at the consent agenda?
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 15O803, to annex an area along
Mayor, hearing none, I approve, move for approval of the consent agenda.
Bradyville Pike and to adopt for same a plan of services.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Second.
Mr. LaLance.
All right, motion is second.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet. Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman. Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 15OZ04, to zone an area along Bradyville
Aye.
Pike to single-family residential 10RS10 district simultaneous with annexation.
Vice Mayor Young.
Move for passage on second reading.
Aye.
Second.
Mayor McFarland.
Motion is second. Aye. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll. You have the February 12, 2015, regular meeting minutes in front of you.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Hearing no comments, I move that they be approved as presented.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 15OZ05, to amend a planned unit development, PUD District, located west of Rucker Lane.
Move for passage.
Second. Second.
Motion is second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright? Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet. Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Washington. Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young. Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into new business, and we'll hear a presentation from Mr. Jimmy Joe with Joe Pastings and Associates for regards to the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2014. Mr. Joe, good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you and present this report. I could go through all 180 pages, but I suspect we'll start losing our audience pretty quick, so I'm going to hit some of the highlights. So, as usual, we had great cooperation from all departments of the city, especially the Finance Department, Melissa and Erin do a great job, and they are very cooperative and very patient with us in the long time that we're here, so we appreciate that. This report, or last year's report, won the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 16th straight year, and that is an honor that's bestowed on the report by the Government Finance Officers Association out of Chicago, and they have a group of experts that take this report, scrutinize it, and if it meets the highest criteria for disclosure and transparency, then they award that certificate. And so we're pleased that it won again last year. There's only, of the 350-some-odd municipalities in the state of Tennessee, only about 30 of those have this award, so we're pleased that Murfreesboro is one of those. This year, the report, again, on the page one, is our auditor's report, and it's a clean or unmodified report. And if you flip over to the management's discussion and analysis right behind that report, this is a summary for several pages that gives management's overview of the city's finances and things impacting the financial condition of the city. Gives a lot of good information, and if someone's interested in just getting an overview, that's a good place to start with those 20 pages there that are in the front of this report. I'm going to hit, just like I said, the highlights. Governmental entities have two types of presentations that are required. One is called the government-wide financial statement, and that's presented behind the tab that says "government-wide." That is a disclosure, a balance sheet, and an income statement that is a lot like a business would present. It includes all the assets of the city, including fixed assets, infrastructure, any assets that the city would own are presented here, and you'll see on that report on page 21 that as of June 30, the city had, in the total column there, you'll see total assets of $1.5 billion at that point. And down at the bottom, the net position or net worth of the city, in the total column, is just over $1 billion in net position. And you can see that breaks down into several categories. The investment in fixed assets and capital assets, a large portion of it is restricted for different purposes, including education, capital activity, and streets, and so on. And then the unrestricted balance at the end of the fiscal year was a total of just over $62 million. The business-type activities are water and sewer and electric. The governmental activities are all the other funds, including the general fund in that column. And that's the balance sheet. If you flip over one more page to page 22, this is the statement of activities, and that's arranged to show the functions or programs of the city. You'll see general government, police, fire, judicial, and so on. And the first column there shows the expense of that category or that program. For instance, if you look at the Police Department, for the year, it had total expenses of $26,273,000. And then in the next three columns, it shows any revenues that are associated directly with that program. So for instance, for police, there was $445,000 for charges for services, which would be fines and that sort of revenue. And then the second column is any grants, operating grants that the department had. Had $139,000 in grants, and then capital grants, which would be used for fixed assets, $376,000. So moving across there, you can see that the Police Department had a net cost of just over $25 million, and that's the amount that's to be supported with through taxes and other revenues. And each category has that similar presentation there, and under business-type activities, you'll see water and sewer, and electric, and then the cemetery. Those are functions that are normally supported, of course, through user fees, and you'll see those presented in charges for services there. And then at the bottom, the general revenue shows the taxes and other general revenues that go to support those programs. Now if you flip over behind the tab that says "fund and financial statements," this is the traditional approach to presentation to governmental, and this focuses more on current resources. In other words, just assets that can be spent or will be converted to cash fairly quickly, and just liabilities that will be paid fairly quickly. So this is more of a budget-type presentation. The general fund there, for instance, you'll see, had total assets of $104 million at the end of June, and then down at the bottom, you'll see fund balances, the fund balance of the general fund was $56,249,000. And of that, $47.9 million was unassigned or unrestricted. And then going across, you can see the general purpose school fund, the debt service fund, and then the bond fund. If you flip over just to page 25, this is a presentation of the revenues and expenditures of the governmental funds. Looking at the general fund, you'll see for the year ended in June, the general fund had $117.7 million in revenues. $80 million of that being taxes, $21 million being intergovernmental, which means state or federal funds that come into the city. And then down below, you see the expenditures, had a total expenditures of $84.1 million for the year. And then down at the bottom, you'll see fund balances, the fund balance of the general fund was $56,249,000. And of that, $47.9 million was unassigned or unrestricted. And then going across, you can see the general purpose school fund, the debt service fund, and then the bond fund. If you flip over just to page 25, this is a presentation of the revenues and expenditures of the governmental funds. Looking at the general fund, you'll see for the year ended in June, the general fund had $117.7 million in revenues. $80 million of that being taxes, $21 million being intergovernmental, which means state or federal funds that come into the city. And then down below, you see the expenditures, had a total expenditures of $84.1 million for the year. And then down at the bottom, you'll see the total fund balance for the general fund of just over $56 million. Now as you go back in this report, the details, there are more details as you go further back. Page 27, for instance, is the general fund presented in detail compared to its budget for the year, and that goes through several pages there. And on page 36, the general fund had total expenditures for the year of $84.1 million, and that compared to a budget of $91 million, well within budget for the fiscal year. Same information will be presented for the school fund, and further back, each fund would be presented along with its budget. Behind the tab that says "notes to financial statements," there's a long discussion about policies, accounting policies of the city, there are different descriptions of the debt that the city has, the assets and infrastructure owned by the city, a lot of information about just the general operation and accounting for the city. If you go back to the back of the report where it says "statistical section," beginning on page 135, there's a lot of information about the revenues and expenditures, fund balances, and other information about the city for the last 10 years. So this is a good place to look to just see what trends the city's had, especially the growth that we've experienced over the last 10 years. Gives information about the property tax levies and some of the larger taxpayers, and gives a lot of information about bonds and debt. Behind the last tab there, it's called "single audit section," this is a detail of all the federal funds, federal and state grant funds that were received by the city. So you can see which department those grants came from, how much was received, and how much was spent for the year, and each grant is spelled out there in the next few pages I think, Mr. Mayor, that's an overview. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Mr. Joe, you've got a couple of team members you want to recognize who have helped you with...
Yeah, thank you for reminding me. I've got Molly Patricus and Suzanne Vandiver back here, and they are probably the most experienced governmental auditors in the state. I'm not saying anything about their age, but they are well-versed in governmental accounting. I'm glad to have them.
Great. Thank you for your work.
Is that parole officer going to stand up all night, or am I going to go and tell him to sit down? I've got one question. Doug, you may remember this better than myself. I thought last year that we had a budgeted $75,000, was it $7,500 for the Boys and Girls Club?
I think it was $6,500, no, $5,000, $6,000. It was either, I think it was $6,500. Because I wanted, I wanted more, and I settled for, I think it was $6,500. But now I don't know what that, does that, what page are you on?
I'm on page number 34, and they didn't show any increase whatsoever last year in what we gave.
I will double-check that if fiscal year 14, and this would reflect the numbers we gave them, so that's what we paid.
Okay.
But I'll double-check. It could be that was for the current year.
Well, he's right about the discrepancy. It depends on which year it reported in, but we went from...
It was $2,000...
$2,500 to $6,500.
It was either $5,000 or $6,500 or something like that.
But it could be for the budget for this year, where this is the report for fiscal year ending June 30, 14. That's what I was going to check.
Okay.
Because it could be we paid on that in the current year when we did the budget back in May and June.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah.
You are? Okay. Because you came on board.
Because this would have been for the budget discussion in 2013.
Correct.
Yeah, which, Rick, yes, I bet that it's for...
This budget that we're working on currently.
14, 15, yeah, they may have actually already gotten the funding.
I just didn't want to short them.
No, you're good. It's a great, good question. Mr. Joe, I think something that is, when you go through and you start seeing all of these combined numbers, would you explain everything that's included in this? Because it includes city schools.
Right.
It's not, this is not just our, the, our budget that we approve, or I say we approve all the budgets, but that's not just our, the city operating budget.
That's correct. We're required to bring in the city schools, which is, they're actually audited by another firm, but they are included in this. Also, the Electric Department, Water and Sewer Department would be included as far as what's not under the purview here.
Sure.
Also, the cemetery would be another separate entity. There's all four of those listed, so that. But they are required to be included because they are under the control ultimately of the city.
Sure.
Hey, Jimmy, will you take, look at page 36? I just want to make sure I'm looking at this correctly. So as it relates to sort of how we budget for our general fund, you know, and, you know, when we start our budget, we budget to take out, and so I might make sure I'm reading this right. When I look at the final budget column there on page 36, essentially what we did was, we had budgeted for our fund balance to go from $52.3 million down to $49.3 million. So in our budget, we had had $3 million of fund balance spent, right?
That's, that's correct.
But what actually happened was our fund balance went from $52 million to $56 million.
That's right.
Okay, so instead of spending $3 million, we actually added $4 million.
That's correct.
In this year, is that, am I reading that all?
About 3.5.
Which just makes us that much stronger.
Added. And you had budgeted for a 3.2 deficit.
Yeah, yes, okay. So $52.6 to $56.2 is the 3.5 you're talking about?
Right. It's right here in the net change in fund balance, right above, a couple of lines up from there.
Oh, yeah.
3.5.
All right. Yeah, okay, good.
But that's correct.
Mr. Lance, I think you bring a good point up, because we, I remember last year, we went and figured this back, that although we budget to go into our general fund, technically a deficit budgeting, there's some requirements that we have by the state that we have to budget for miscellaneous funds, some things that we have to budget for, but I think we added up over the last eight years, and that number was $51 million that we've added to our general, to our general fund that we had not spent. I don't know if that sounds right, but I remember we went over that last year.
That sounds reasonable, and you've ended up with a total, right now, of over $56 million in fund balance, so. And that speaks a lot to the financial stability of the city, because that's probably, you know, I think it's more than six months of expenditures in reserve, so that's, that's pretty solid.
Any more questions?
I'd just like to say you all did a great job, and we're glad to have you as a partner.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jimmy.
We appreciate it.
It looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go tell the cops sitting on my back.
All right, we'll now move into recommendations from the, of the environmental engineer with regards to conceptual design proposal from Griggs and Maloney for the Town Creek Conveyance modifications between Murphy Springs and South Church Street is Southeast Broad Street. Ms. Trelson.
Mayor.
Mayor McFarland.
I'm sorry.
Before you move on, could we do a motion just to accept the audit for the records?
Absolutely.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Shacklet, Councilman LaLance. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the council. Good to be here tonight. Have a proposal I've got before you tonight for a fairly insignificant conceptual design study, but it actually leads us into a much larger project. I placed at your seats just before the meeting a packet of information. I'll be showing this on the slide on the televisions above, but it's sometimes easier for council to read the actual paper copies. And I want to talk to you about a project in a very significant part of our community, right at the front door of City Hall, right at the front door of downtown, an area that has a very significant history in our community, and it's in between two really good gems in our Parks and Rec collection of properties at Cannonsburg and Murphy Springs. So on the site plan that you have on top, on the top sheet, you'll see we're talking about the Town Creek Conveyance. Now, Mr. Joe was very gracious, and he said he'd be glad to talk about this tonight because he thought it might be something a little bit more wet than, than the financial report. But so we're going to talk about the Town Creek Conveyance, and so on your map there, you'll see South Church Street, Southeast Broad Street, and the Town Creek Conveyance actually travels from Murphy Springs underground to Cannonsburg. It's about 1,800 feet of a very significant drainage system that was installed in the 40s and 50s. And so now that you've got your location, if you'll turn to the second page in your handout, and just for a brief history of Town Creek, it's the outlet of Sand Springs and Murphy Springs, and we're certainly familiar with Murphy Springs because of the Children's Discovery Center and the boardwalk that's there, but one thing you may not know is Sand Springs was the city's first water supply spring, and there's a historic marker on Sand Springs on the boardwalk that talks about that, and there was an effort to use actually wooden pipes to carry water from Sand Springs up to the center of the square. And certainly Murphy Springs served as many, for many years, as the city's drinking water supply until we built the current water treatment plant on Sam Jarrett Drive and started withdrawing from these fork of the Stones River. It flows through an area known as the Bottoms, and I was talking to Councilman Young just before the meeting, and he was reminiscing about, about his time there on the square and his familiarity with the company-owned business there, the Young Lumber Company that was right at about the location of the city Parks and Rec Maintenance Building, right here at City Hall. It was impacted by construction of Southeast Broad Street in the 1950s, and we all know that Southeast Broad Street cut diagonally across a street pattern that was gridded north, south, east, west, and that was added to the city in the 1950s. The culverts installed in there aged from about, from the early 50s through the late 60s, putting the age of that infrastructure at somewhere between 50 and 60 years. Many of our pipe systems and many of the construction materials we use in piping, you would generally expect them to have a useful life of 50 to 100 years, so we're right in the middle and approaching the end of the useful life of some of those systems. The Murphy Springs outlet was modified in 2001 with the construction of the Children's Discovery Center and the boardwalk. We had a significant culvert failure in the parking lot of KFC in 2007. That was repaired, and we have a current failure on the corner lot, and that happened in 2011. That prompted the Engineering Department to secure funding for a thorough engineering inspection, which was completed in 2014. Next page. This is a copy of a site plan that came out of the Bottoms Urban Renewal Plan, which was executed at about the same time that Southeast Broad Street was constructed through this part of town. And you can see, if you, if you were to look closely on there, there's some residences and buildings and shops and warehouses, all that back right up to the creek. This area was approximately six to eight feet lower than it is... This area was approximately six to eight feet lower than it is today. It was a, a chronic flooding problem, and so the urban renewal project was constituted to, to change the course of this part of our community. Next page. And here's just a copy of the plans from the Broad Street construction, showing Town Creek running actually under current Broad Street. It was relocated to the west, and then with the urban, the Bottoms Urban Renewal Plan, placed in a culvert approximately eighteen hundred feet long. And then if you'll look at your next page, you'll see the master plan for what we called the Bottoms Urban Renewal, and, and you will see that that is the current street pattern as it exists in that area today. Now to talk a little more specifically about the local area, the area that, that's, that we're having concerns with today, this is at the corner of Southeast Church, I'm sorry, Southeast Broad and Church Street. I put the logos up there of a couple of our retail locations. You'll see KFC on the bottom of the page and McDonald's on the top of the page, and they show where we've had our most recent and most significant repairs and failures. And they, they really are in the parking lot and landscape areas of those facilities that you see right there. We have the repaired section there behind KFC, and then we currently have two damaged sections, one in the drive-through of KFC, and then also one in that corner lot. And then if you go to your next page, these are actual photographs from when we did our engineering inspection. On the left-hand part of that page, you'll see the failure in the reinforced concrete, and that's in the corner lot that we just looked at, and then also pictures of the corrugated metal pipe sections as they travel under the drive-through at KFC. And that'll give you an idea of, of some of the worst damage and worst problem areas we have. And then if you'll flip to the next page, you'll also see where we installed new materials in the first forty-five feet there. That's a reinforced concrete box culvert that was installed in two thousand and seven, and that takes you into the corrugated metal pipe sections that we just looked at the pictures. And then if you'll look at the page that's titled Potential Stream Restoration Segments, we talked with the owners of the, the corner parcels there, and this, this, there's three properties in there that are under the same ownership, two lots that front on South Church Street and the KFC lot just immediately south of that. Those are all three in the same ownership. That property owner, which is the franchise operator for KFC in this area, decided in two thousand and twelve to close the KFC. They were up against a remodel, rework, or build new condition on their franchise contract, and so they decided to close at KFC. So the, KFC has not operated out of that location since two thousand and twelve. They have that property on the market. A potential buyer came into our office about a month or so ago, and we reviewed the condition of our drainage system and some of our concerns we had, and asked them, would they be interested in partnering with the city because of the significant failures we have in there? And when they didn't walk out the door, when I, when I showed them the extent of the project, I said, maybe we've got a good public-private partner there. And, and so what I bring for you, before you today is a, a proposal that we have to work in this section only to start with, but then to consider this perhaps as a larger and bolder and more comprehensive plan to redo the Town Creek Conveyance from Murphy Springs to Cannonsburg. And you'll see on that I have in, labeled in blue areas that we would like to open that system up, not have it in pipe, not have it under the ground, but actually have it opened up. Town Creek is a stream. Town Creek has year-round flow. Town Creek has aquatic life in it. When we walked through for our inspection, we found panfish and largemouth bass in the conveyance as we were walking through. So today, we could not get permission from the state to put this creek in eighteen hundred feet of culvert. We'd have to do something differently. Our approach is to actually turn back time and then daylight Town Creek, and, and what you see on this, on this sheet in front of you is a concept to have part of our system in a drainage conveyance, in pipes, in a culvert, to allow the commercial operations that, that want to be there to exist, but then to have some segments open so that we restore the natural stream in this area. It's a very popular thing that's happening in many locations in our state, and something that the state looks very favorably on. We do have some water quality issues, some water quality problems with Town Creek, and we're currently monitoring those, but we do believe this project could be helpful in restoring the water quality of Town Creek. And so Mr. Young asked me just before the meeting if we had any pictures of what I thought it might look like, and I, I did, on the next page, I did find an image on the internet that I felt like represented what we have in mind for a concept. Now keep in mind, this is an urban setting. If you look in the background, you see a public road, you see real nice, I think this is probably on a college campus, and, and you see that it is an urban setting. But what I want you to focus on is perhaps what, what the stream looks like. And, and one of the things I wanted to, to get was a stream that's, that I believe is about the same size of stream that we'll be dealing with. So I got you an image that represents a, a smaller stream. This is an urban stream. If I could take you to the footbridge in Cannonsburg, and you've been there perhaps during Uncle Dave making days, or at other times when you visited, and you know the width of that stream, and you know the depth of that stream, we're talking about the same creek, we're talking about the same water, we're talking about that point about eighteen hundred feet upstream from, from Cannonsburg. And so what we would look to do is open that up, have the repair and vegetation, restore the stream segment, and, and then allow the commercial development, the, the private property owner there, to blend his site plan in with our plan to restore the stream. And so that's my vision today, and I wanted to talk to you again then about our recommendations. So if you look at the last page, I do ask for your approval of the Griggs Maloney proposal for conceptual design. The budget for that's only forty, eighty-four hundred dollars, but what that budget does is starts us down the road to a more significant restoration and infrastructure project. I'm recommending the funding from the stormwater fee cash reserves, which is where we fund most of our stormwater maintenance and stormwater restoration activities. I would like it to be approved contingent upon the city attorney agreeing to the terms and conditions in the proposal and the agreement from Griggs Maloney. She has a copy of that and may in fact have already reviewed it. Griggs and Maloney is going to team with the engineering company that has performed the surveying and inspection that we've discussed already tonight, and we still have budget and existing contract to also allow ICA Engineering to help us with the conceptual design. I'll be coming back before this body with a detailed, detailed design proposals once we've completed the conceptual design. My target for this would be to have this project designed and ready for bid sometime in the summer of two thousand and fifteen, with the target of doing construction at least on the upper part in the fall of two thousand and fifteen during times of low flow. And then we also want to obviously partner with our public and private partners with TDEC on the permitting, with TDEC on the stream restoration, and then also with the private property owner, if the buyer goes through with, with his planned purchase, working with that private property owner to find a plan that works with their intended use of the, of the property and would meet our needs as well. So that's my recommendation tonight. I wanted to give you just a glimpse of what we were looking at here, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions. We're talking about the funding of this coming out of our stormwater fund, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Which right now we have about nine point, I think nine point six million. Last year that fund grew about one point two million, and stats show that we are gaining about a million dollars annually in that fund. Right now we have a very healthy fund. We've done overall Hopgood, Mitchell Nielsen, and we've already approved here lately the ten classrooms at Hopgood and expanding Black Fox and GM and Hopgood and whatnot. In your presentation, you were talking about, and I know all this money is going to be reimbursed through bonds, but you were talking about, you mentioned twice, the future being a large project.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about going down to Cannonsburg possibly? Is that the little street behind the coffee mat? Is that?
Hickerson.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think you, I may be mistaken, but you worked on our five-year plan, the CIP, for large projec, projects like that?
Yes, ma'am.
This is going to be a huge project. What do you see our options being, seeing that you own that committee with that five-year?
Well, let me, let me, I heard a couple of points in there that, that I might be able to help you with. The first point we heard was the fund balance and the stormwater cash reserves, and I don't have the exact number in, in front of me, but we, we reviewed the cash reserve balance in the stormwater fund. As we're looking ahead to budgeting this year, and in fact, we, we met with Mr. Crumley and Mr. Gore of the Water and Sewer Department just last week, that fund balance, right now, our projections are that that fund balance is going to drop at least a million dollars by the time this year is over, and then we have projected spending that would also reduce it approximately another million dollars in the next budget cycle, which will be FYI fifteen, sixteen. So the fund balance is going down there. This project was on the stormwater CIP.
Right.
In there, and we had it funded at about two and a half million dollars.
Right. But I was just, I know you mentioned this being a huge project down the road, I just didn't know what your vision for this project down the road.
Well, let me tell you how we got to put this project on the stormwater CIP.
Okay.
We have eighteen hundred linear feet of failing infrastructure, the storm drain system, the culverts, the corrugated metal pipe, the concrete box culvert. They have a, they have a useful life at best of a hundred years. We've already used fifty to sixty years of that useful life. We already have significant failures. Our choices are to repair or replace what we have at a very expensive cost, and then sometime in the future, face that same choice again, to repair or replace.
Right.
When that system fails again. If I could take you to a national issue, crumbling infrastructure, infrastructure reinvestment, those are all issues you hear at the Tennessee Municipal League, you hear that at the state level, you hear that at the federal level on roads and bridges and water lines and sewer lines, and that's what we're facing. We're facing the idea that we've got to replace eighteen hundred linear feet of very significant, very expensive box culvert, or we can approach this way and open up part of that system where it's soil and rocks and vegetation and the stream is exposed, and it becomes an asset to our community as potential walking trail and a connection between two very significant park facilities. Those are, those are the two options as, as we see it.
Right. I understand, I know. Thank you.
Mr. LaLance, Sam.
Is this similar to what Shelbyville, what was going on down in Shelbyville? I mean, is that a similar type of a system? I know they had an underground.
Yes, a few years ago, the city of Shelbyville did have failure of a ten-foot diameter corrugated metal pipe right through the middle of their.
Yeah, it was miserable.
Downtown.
I mean, that was terrible.
Very significant transportation system there, road network. If I recall, it was on or adjacent to two thirty-one as it goes through Shelby.
Yeah, so basically we got potential of the same kind of thing right here on two thirty-one coming into town where.
That's right.
This infrastructure.
Although I will tell you that the system under two thirty-one and the system under Front Street, which is, which are both bridges, are in very good shape. They need some minor maintenance, so they're in good shape.
When you do your, I'm sorry, just one more. When you do the study, the, when we get the study done, will it, will we be able to at least see some kind of an idea or have some sort of a grasp on what the, the cost would look like, you know, to, to daylight it versus redo the, or repipe it, or whatever you want to call it?
Sure.
I mean, will they tell us that?
Yes, well, I, I, we can bring those cost comparisons back to you. The, the conceptual study would result in a recommendation on an approach from our design team.
Mr. Smutten.
Sam, can you tell me who owns the property, or does the ci, it doesn't matter who owns it, does the city own the property between McDonald's and Church Street where we had the failure?
No, the city does not own the property. We, the only property we have is the Pocket Park at the corner of Church Street and Hickerson.
There's a Pocket Park in there.
Between Broad, Church and Hickerson?
On the west side.
Between Broad, Church and Hick, it's next door to the budget breaks.
Okay.
The lower part of Murphy Springs is owned by TWRA. We have an agreement with them to have the boardwalk in there. The upper part of Murphy Springs, where our water treatment plant was and where the Children's Discovery is, that's city-owned property, but TWRA came into possession of the Murphy Springs many, many years ago as a settlement of a, of a wetlands encroachment in that area.
You, you mentioned that the person who's considering buying KFC's former location is willing to work with you. I'm assuming we're going to reroute the stream possibly around McDonald's and across that property. How, how many of the people do you think will be willing to go along with this? Because, I mean, I see, obviously, the city's property we'd be willing to, to, to fix.
Yes, and, and so at this location, there are two property owners, the, the current owner of the KFC and the two lots in between KFC and Southeast Broad. That's the same owner. That franchise operator, they chose probably in the two thousand and one timeframe to buy those two available lots. They wanted to redevelop co-brand KFC, add a service station to it, they worked with McDonald's. They made three or four efforts at a redevelopment plan for that corner and never could get a project that they wanted and that everybody else could, could agree to. It's, the, the area's covered up with easements, the setback from the road. So there, there are three lots in there, counting the KFC property, all in the same ownership, and then the McDonald's property. And the idea on the McDonald's property is to shift the, the drainage system from underneath their parking lot to actually on the edge of their landscape strip that runs along the west side of that property. So it'd be, it'd be in their open space, landscape area is, is where I have it conceptually targeted at this time.
The line that you've drawn, once it crosses Hickerson and gets down to where it's going into Cannonsburg, there's a line that goes back up towards Broad Street there on this very front page. Is that just a line with some kind of data above it here?
Yes, it's a text leader. It's a, this was, this was a copy of the, of the location map in our engineering inspection report, and those are actually survey coordinates.
So once it comes out from under the road there at Cannonsburg, it's, it's a wide open?
That's it, yeah. And you, you can see the footbridge that I think all of you are familiar with there that comes from the parking lot over to, over to Cannonsburg proper.
Well, it would certainly be aesthetically pleasing compared to what's there now, and certainly reduce, I guess, future maintenance problems that we might have, wouldn't it?
That's right. And, and infrastructure, infrastructure management and replacement is what's driving me today to bring this study to you for the KFC and McDonald's corner. Infrastructure failure is what brings me here. The larger picture, the more global picture, has to involve lots of stakeholders, Parks and Rec, the current property owners. It has to look at land use and zoning. It has to look at transportation facilities, road networks. It has to look at property values, and in all of those things, infrastructure reconstruction will likely not drive that decision. It'll be an element of it, but it won't drive that decision. That decision will need to be made based on land use and zoning and redevelopment. That's my perception on it, and, and Mr. Crumley and, and some of the others on staff and I have had several discussions about this area, and he may, he may want to add something along those lines as well.
Let me ask you one more question. Would there be something that would, obviously with the ditch, you have a limited amount of water that can flow through it, with current culvert, there's a limited amount of water that can flow through it. Would there be a culvert at the start of this that would limit the amount of water that could potentially be released into this creek? that could potentially be released into this creek during a flooding situation?
So the outlet structure for Murphy Springs, it is a control structure today. That control structure was designed as a part of the Children's Discovery Center, Murphy Springs, project. It does have a very significant impact on what happens upstream in the Murphy Wetland and downstream in the conveyance. We did a detailed hydrologic analysis and a detailed flood study. And what I can tell you from that detailed flood study, the downstream conveyance system, based on that outlet structure, is oversized today. We have more pipe than we really need. So that pipe, in a 100-year flood situation, would not flow full. A ditch, if I could say it that way, an open channel instead of being round and enclosed on top, actually, when we open that up, gives us much more capacity up at the top than the pipe and culvert ever did. So an open system, a ditch system, actually has more capacity to carry flow than does a pipe system. So flooding, transporting the significant rain events that come into that basin down to Lidle Creek, still got to do that. It's still got to have that function, still got to be able to pass those extreme flows. We'd like for it to do it in something besides a pipe and culvert for the 1,800 feet.
But if a person were to come and say, "This is going to flood my property," the answer would probably be, "You're going to have better runoff on your property than you currently have because of the ability to run water off into the stream."
And I'll remind you of an incident we had at this location, is in 2005, if my memory serves. But we had some very significant rainfalls. We had local flooding at various parts of town. The storm system moved out. Two days later, two days later, the intersection of Church and Broad was underwater. Why was it underwater? Because of debris that had built up in this system and the delay in the actual floodwaters that come from Hoover's Lake and Todd's Lake and Chelsea Place Ponds and then into Murphy Springs. So that flood event was actually delayed two days after the rain had already left. Bright sunny morning, people on their way to work, and there's two feet of water in the intersection of Church and Broad, and we're all scratching our heads. I will tell you, at that time, we had a very active population of Beaver, and the Beaver dam debris would wash out occasionally, and it caught under Church Street and blocked the capacity of that culvert. So we were able to remedy that fairly easily, but it does tell us the very significant flood events that can happen right there.
Ms. Harris, one other question.
One more question. Based on what you were saying and just visualizing in the future, it sounds like a possibility of maybe a tie-in between Cannonsburg and the Discovery Center in the future.
That's one of the, one of the goals, one of our visions for this corridor is to also make a pedestrian connection. I certainly think it'll be very easy to accomplish to South Church Street. South Church Street offers us some complications for pedestrians. And then where we deliver them, beyond South Church Street, do you take them through the KFC parking lot, through the McDonald's parking lot? Or do you choose an alternate route that gets them back into Murphy Springs and the boardwalk? And, you know, I've looked at a couple of alternatives in there. We could possibly use the roadway network, a pedestrian crossing at the signal, and then actually route them along our sidewalk network to a better pedestrian facility that would be just off of Church Street. There's an existing maintenance drive that serves WGNS's radio tower and the boardwalk, and it's possible that we could secure that for pedestrian connection as well.
Thank you.
One last question, Mr. Huddleston. Would this not open up the opportunities for redevelopment of this area? This would give the property owners and future property owners a benchmark of what they're going to have and how they could work around it?
Yes, it's certainly, in our mind, it certainly has the potential to be a game changer. You know, if you look at what we've done with Main Street, at what we've done in the downtown area, at what we're looking to do with the bridge, the bridge over Broad and the streetscape along Broad Street, what we're looking to do down West Main Street, I see this as just a continuation of some of the significant improvements we've made over the past few years and that we look to make in the next few years. And so this can be an incentivizer for somebody looking to somehow reuse or redevelop or repurpose properties, really at the front door of downtown and at the front door of City Hall and at a very significant part in our community.
Need more questions for Mr. Huddleston?
You're on a motion.
Guess we need a motion, don't we?
Yes.
For approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, for call's roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. Thank you. We'll now consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager with regards to the addition of an authorized position count for one planner. Mr. Crumley.
Mayor and Council, we are recommending tonight that you add one full-time planner. If you go back to 2009, planning staff along with the Building and Code staff was somewhat larger than it is today. At that time, the city manager committed to you that in those areas where workload determined how many hands we needed to perform, that we would ask for and take away from when the workload justified it. We now believe that the workload justifies an additional planner. Tip of the hat to interim director Gary Whitaker. Gary has been very active in the planning department since his arrival. He's shared a lot of what he knows and what he's learned with the city manager and I. And one of those things is the process, where almost every item that the planning staff takes in requires them to touch it on average three times. We've inquired of the local engineering firms about their workload coming in the pipeline for planning in the future, and they're informing us that they really don't see a significant decline in the amount of that workload. So based on that workload, based on Gary's recommendation that the extra hands are needed, we're recommending to you immediately adding one full-time planner to the budget. In this fiscal year, departmental savings, if that's not sufficient, the unforeseen contingency budget would cover the roughly $16,000 of expense, hoping we could find someone by early April. In the next budget year, we will fully budget that position as a regular staff member in the planning department. Be glad to try to answer any questions. Gary's here if you have any questions of him.
Any questions? Mr. Crumley.
I just know with Mr. Smutman and I on the planning commission, we had a four-hour meeting three weeks ago. So I know the workload is there, and I think we need to do this. So I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second. Ms. Wright, for call's roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. We'll hear from the city attorney with regards to the solid waste collection.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a follow-up to the discussion that you had last month relative to the fact that the city had requests, had received requests from residents in multifamily townhome condominium complexes who, under the city's zoning ordinance, were not entitled to receive solid waste collection services but wanted to do so. And you were presented with some policy options that would allow that under certain circumstances, and you asked staff to go forward and work that up. What you have before you is a result of discussions between the legal department staff, the Assistant City Manager, the Solid Waste Director, and the interim planning director. And we believe that what is appropriate is for the council to adopt a resolution that would, as stated in Section 1, allow the two locations which had been receiving service to continue to do so, and would set up criteria, as stated in Section 2, for existing developments to request city solid waste service. And it spells out what those criteria are, and that the solid waste director would be the one to determine if those criteria were met. If he approves, them is meeting the criteria, then service would start as soon as they'd been able to redesign the route and get the garbage cans. If he should say that they don't meet the criteria, that development would have the opportunity to appeal the decision to the city manager, whose decision would be final. And in Section 3, providing those three developments that have approved master plans and valid site plans to continue to request and receive solid waste service on the same criteria as the already-built developments. And expressing intent in Section 4, that new construction would be on public streets, would be able to receive such city solid waste service, that provision for new developments on public streets to receive such service is expressed through amendments to the zoning ordinance, which are contained in the ordinance that we have presented to you, which in Section 1 provides that at the site plan state, there's a checklist of information to be provided, and it identifies what that information would be, and specifically sets out what the criteria are, which are generally duplicative of what was in the resolution in Section 2. And so, and saying that if those criteria are met, then services can be provided without regard to the otherwise applicable requirement that mass collection commercial service be provided. So we think the combination of the resolution and the ordinance achieve what the discussion was. One thing that, as a result of staff discussion, we did specifically add references to the cul-de-sacs being of an appropriate radius, and we wanted to make it clear that in future, for developments that have not yet received site plan approval, if they are a large multifamily townhome development, it would have to be on a public street. And that had not been expressly limited in your prior discussion. So I'm sure that my colleagues, Mr. Crumley and Mr. Whitaker, will be glad to respond to any question that I cannot answer that you may have about the resolution or the ordinance.
I just wanted to make the comment, I think that looking and reading over this, it's a good mix between some of the multifamily developments that were receiving solid waste pickup and some that were very similar but were not receiving. So it brings some.
Consistent.
Yeah, some consistency. But I also think that what it also allows is that for those dwellings to be able to receive the service, they are going to have to meet criteria that, you know, it's not going to cause undue burden to the city. So, you know, it seems like something that's very fair and something I think that going through this process has also shown us that we're really taking this, it is part of planning, but I think that we have learned that we're also taking this a step farther and making it where solid waste is part of the process. They're going to be picking up the loads, they're going to be picking up the dumpsters, and we're giving them the ability to look and say, "That plan doesn't make sense. We're going to have trouble for service delivery." So it really helps.
Well, Mayor, actually, that is one thing, as the four of us discussed it. We didn't put in the ordinance the comment that Mr. Crumley had made in his letter to you about the solid waste director being the one who made that decision. The solid waste director would certainly be making it for existing developments and those proposed and existing site plans. But we were in agreement that there should be enough information submitted with the plans, that the planning director would have authority, obviously, as with any plan, if there's a need for specialized input from any member of staff, the planning director can call upon that to do it. But we're trying to speed, make more efficient, the planning process by reducing rather than increasing the number of people who have to participate in the process and by calling for the information that would allow a trained planning staff member to do that.
That's what, on the existing developments. Any questions?
Would you like one cohesive or two?
Two, one for the resolution and one for the ordinance, please.
I'll make a motion for the resolution to be adopted, 15-R-08.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Ms. Wright, for call's roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15-011, amending the Murphy Springs City Code, Appendix A zoning, Section 7 and Section 18 pertaining to city solid waste collection service to multifamily developments. Because there's two resolutions, correct?
One resolution, one ordinance. This is just the, on the ordinance.
Move for passage on first reading ordinance 15-011.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15R-07, requesting unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to state treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act. Ms. Wright.
Mayor, this is something we do every year. We submit funds to the state, and after a certain timeframe is passed, we're allowed to claim those funds back. Those funds, if a taxpayer or whoever was supposed to be and received those funds did not claim them from the state, we will still turn those over to them at that time if they come to us with a claim. But this way, they stay with us instead of staying with the state long term.
I'll move for passage.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. We have two Board and Commission appointments tonight. We have three appointments to the Cable Television Commission and an appointment to the Discipline Area Review Board.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. Ms. Wright, we have two beer permits?
Yes. We have one permit that is complete. It is a location that's already open here in the city, and they would like to add beer. They have met their Building Codes inspections. You will notice one of the applicants does have a fairly lengthy list of some violations. We have already checked with the legal department, and they do not meet any of the more thermitude requirements that would allow you to not approve the beer permit for those because of the nature of what they are and the level of what they are. So I can recommend these for approval if you wish to do that. These charges would not violate anything to do that. The other one is a location where we've had beer before, and it's just a new restaurant locating there. They have not quite finished their Building Codes inspections, but otherwise, their background checks have come back, and I recommend it for approval once it has passed its Codes inspections.
Okay, you have these beer permits in front of you.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smutman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Sorry, I couldn't hear.
Ted.
Aye, okay. Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye.
You have a list of the statements to be paid in front of you?
Mayor, I approve. I make a motion, we pay the bills. Easy for me to say.
Second.
Ms. Wright? Motion to pay. Ms. Schreitfeld, motion to pay the bills.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye.
You have some other business in front of you? Looks like we need to buy some salt.
I don't think there is a surprise that we need to replenish the salt supply. A big note of thanks to the team at Street Division, at Solid Waste, at Urban Environmental, Police. Over these last two weeks, really, of terrible weather, they have been out on the streets when they were needed. I'd like to tell you that I think our streets were probably as good and passable as any community in the mid-state. There's still a terrific number of trees and damage to trees that has yet to make its way to the curb, so Solid Waste in particular will be putting in some extra time to get all that brush picked up and removed from the curb line. But this specific request for 600 tons, I'm sorry, 800 tons of rock salt, that replenishes what we have used to date on the roadways during this winter. Dollar amount is $55,624. This is off the statewide contract with Morton Salt.
Move, we approve the request. Second.
Jim, one real quick question. Is there a shelf life on how long salt lasts?
Not really. In, in proper storage, and we do have a reasonably good storage bin, what you find is that there's a hard crust on the, the salt that's exposed directly to the air, but once you've broken through that crust, the, the salt generally is still crystalline and ready to be loaded and dispensed by the trucks.
Sorry. I have a question.
Adds flavor to the meeting.
Motion, a second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye.
Mayor, we have one other piece of business. We'd like for you to set a 5:00 p.m. workshop on March the 19th. That is a Thursday, likely prior to a regular council meeting, to hear the report on the classification and compensation study. We've been in contact with Management Advisory Group, MAG. They believe they will be ready to present their findings to you on that date. We've confirmed that time and date with them, subject to your all's availability, on the 19th at 5:00.
Where will you want to have that meeting?
Right here.
Okay. How does that look on everyone's calendar?
Thursdays are blotted out forever.
All right, I think that, I think I'm hearing that sounds good, even though there are a lot of people who are anxiously awaiting that report.
I will also turn Kenya loose on you all tomorrow morning to try to get dates for two other workshops. Police and the Management Office met with the architects for the Police Headquarters Building. In about two weeks, it will be time for them to sit down with council and show you the results that they have on paper of their architectural efforts on designing a new police headquarters. We will also need some time before the end of the month to sit down and go through the capital improvement plan. It's a very large capital improvement plan this year, and we've done some serious work with the departments to try to trim that and get that back in line, but with primarily the police headquarters, it's going to be quite a large number in the CIP for the upcoming year. But those two dates, I'll ask Kenya to, to call tomorrow and start working with you on dates. I don't know that either one of them have to be council member, council meeting Thursdays. It's fine if they are, but those may be meetings that we could work in at other times.
Okay.
Mayor, could we have a motion to approve setting a special meeting on the 19th?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Schreitfeld, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye.
While we're setting dates, I know we had a discussion a few weeks ago about trying to do a retreat. I don't want that to just go away. I think that's a good idea to, to try to do something. Maybe we could go ahead and get that, is that still moving?
I know the manager has spoke with at least two other potential facilitators of a council retreat, so I'll, I'll wait for him to return to deliver that news to you, but I know he has talked with at least two others.
And we have public hearings next week?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I am not, I'm, I don't know how I got roped into playing in the Harlem Ambassador's basketball game for Riverdale, so I may be a little late next week, so, or come in on crutches, Vice Mayor Young. So, I'll, I'll be late.
But I'm playing on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. 5th, 12th, and 19th.
We're going, we're going to work you out this month.
All right. So, great. Okay, any other information to come for the council?
I'd just like to echo again what Mr. Crumley said about our employees going over and beyond the call of duty this last week. I was, in my neighborhood, we did not have power, and they were fabulous. So, employees, on behalf of the mayor, I'm sure all the council members, you all are the best employees this side of heaven. You did a fabulous job. The city did not miss a beat.
Great comments. All right, we'll stand adjourned.